We're dealing with a bureaucracy that's not here today that's forcing people to do something that we have to deal with.
I was informed by the Health Department, which originated this issue, and I believe Mr. Carney was informed, that they were going to require, require tap-in of all existing homes that were on this sewer line. They can't see you nodding back there, Ken, so maybe you...
I'm not up there.
All right, sorry.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, sir. Please come to the podium.
Because we have other speakers in line.
Absent that, I don't think we would have been involved in this project.
That's correct. Mr. Cortez is absolutely correct. The Health Department is following EPA law, and they are the enforcement agency. And this is a copy of what we just talked about an hour ago. This is a governmental mandate that we're trying to live with, and as our representatives, trying to help get this cost as low as we can. But they, as an enforcement agency, they will not be suing us, they will be suing you. And they'll be the enforcement agency, I say that three times, it's very powerful.
Right, and regardless of whether you band together and hire an attorney, or individually form small groups and hire an attorney, you're gonna have to pay. You know, there's gonna be, you're gonna have to, once that happens, the costs are gonna start mounting up for everybody there.
And the Health Department has a very unique history in this when it was constructed, because they had promised numerous things, and there's letters that have relinquished and took those promises back, in letter form.
Right, and it may seem like we're the bad people. It may seem like we're the bad people here, but actually, as strange as this seems to sound, we're trying to help. You know, I mean, it may not seem that way, but we are.
You know as well as I do, they even granted people permission not to tap in until they sold their homes. And then after that, they did not enforce that. And now they're enforcing, because of Route 58 having a commitment for possible legal commitment or legal solution to their regulation in order to enforce that, to connect in Route 58, service connections, they're applying that to Oberlin Road. It's unfortunate there's no representatives here from the Health Department, very disappointed in that.
We should have heard.
I do want to say one more thing. Mr. Lynch is very, Neil, you're still here? He's very articulate, and he's hit the nail on the head at least a half a dozen times, incorrectly each time. But I didn't want the residents of Oberlin Road to know, and the Middle Ridge Road customers, which I think number in the neighborhood of 17, give or take, though, the amount of Ohio Public Works Commission funding is there, but it's not applicable at all to laterals. It is an infrastructure improvement grant that is available to infrastructure improvements, deficient infrastructure. This is not deficient infrastructure, these are laterals connecting to a sewer. That's why you're not available for any Ohio Public Works Commission grants or loans. But Columbia has a deficient EPA mandated improvement to the plant, and that's why that's available to the Plum Creek Plant. I want you to know, I'll know the difference between those two requirements.
Thank you.
But yes, you're right, Mr. Cortez, it's another mandate that we're beaming forth upon, and it's up to us to make that decision, or your commissioners make the decision if there's any alternatives, such as Mr. Lynch suggested.
Jerry Scheidler?
My name is Jerry Scheidler, I live on Oberlin Road. I think there's another issue here that needs to be, make sure it's in order, and that is the capacity. On day one, when that sewer was sized to whatever size it needs to be to come from the airport to where it goes, it was sized for, I'm sure, the people along Oberlin Road, and then the airport south. But since then, there's been a sewer line on 113 that connects into it, that goes towards South Amherst, and I think it goes into South Amherst a ways, and there, at that junction point on 58, it actually goes south, down 58, I think, to that Gulf Driving Range or wherever. And so this has all been added to it since day one. Now, as a sewer, back then, could they have had the foresight to see all this, that this is all going into here now? Oh, boy, we better make it a little bit bigger, just because, hey, this is gonna happen. Also, on Oberlin Road, down a little ways from where I live, I've heard rumors, and I think they're fairly accurate, that there is a housing development being planned in property there that the party has since passed away, and this is now more sewage being added. And I'm speaking here of, maybe, are we looking for sewage backup in people's houses, mainly down the road from me, downstream from me? I think this is something pretty serious here, and I think we ought to check into this. Maybe first of all, is this sewer capable of handling all of this stuff? And I've heard, I got actually letters here in this packet that says it's not. Now, I may not be able to interpret in those letters exactly, but it says it's not. And so I think this is one issue that we should maybe give some thought to. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Wayne, can you answer that issue about capacity?
That's a good point, and the only thing I can say is that the capacity of the sewer was looked into by the City of Lorain. Their engineers did a very detailed, complete study, and they've, they believe that, yes, it is capable of handling the area, and they actually built some protections, some backup facilities. The one gentleman responded to a sewer, a new sewer being put in, that was to put in to store wet rainwater, and anything that could get into the system that could possibly cause a problem. So there are backups, and another entity, the City of Lorain, which ultimately we discharge into, has built this system, and they give you their guarantee it will work.
Thank you. Ma'am, who's standing in line next?
Yeah, my name's Susan Shepherd, I live on Middle Ridge. I want to get elementary here. The City of Lorain is the people that are in charge right now of the existing sewer, they get the proceeds, is that correct? Does anybody?
The City of Lorain accepts, you'd be paying your bill there, yes.
Okay, you'd be paying your bill, so the City of Lorain, that is their sewer, is that...
The sewer belongs to the Lorain County Sanitary District.
Okay, but the City of Lorain collects $30 a month, or whatever that may be.
The fees are paid for them because the sewage ultimately ends up at their waste treatment facility.
Okay, okay. My question is, he said about a deficient structure, the grant, I'm being elementary again, where does my property go to? I'm a house on Middle Ridge, where does my property stop, my property line, as far as next to the road? Does it go into the road?
Mr. Bishop, how is that assessed?
The, you know, it depends on if you're in an allotment, or if you're in an acreage parcel, or just an unplotted area.
Acreage.
Yeah, at acreage, you probably own to the middle of the road.
Okay.
Now, if the public road is a dedicated road, and you have an allotment, then obviously your property line is the right-of-way line. It all depends, everybody has a different configuration and layout.
Okay.
And the answer to your question about the sewers, yeah, the sewers do end up in a county sewer, which has a contract with the City of Lorain to receive the wastewater, and there's different stipulations on which part of Oberlin Road you live in, which part is owned by the county, which is owned by the city. Everything south of 113 is county, everything north is city. And then with the new agreement, there's different things about who owns and operates the system. Lorain operates the system for you, they maintain it. You charge, they charge you for treating the wastewater and for that operation and expense.
Okay. So then, technically, my property on Middle Ridge there, I have a little bit over an acre, goes to the middle of the roadway. My question is, the Health Department says that we have to tap in. A tap, is that not on your property, a tap for the sewer? Is that normally not, in order for somebody to tap in, a tap is on their property, so you can connect from your house?
Yeah, the way the law reads, and I think you got a letter on that, I'm not positive, but if your house is within 200 feet of a sewer, you're required to connect into it? If you have no problems with your septic tank, if they have documented failure of your septic tank or system, it doesn't matter if you're 1,000 feet away, they make you fix it up or connect to a sewer.
So, in essence, you're required to tap in, but we have right now, in my situation, people on my side of the street, the sewer is not completed in order to enable me to tap in, to hit that tap.
Yeah, I think that's the reason they haven't really told you, you had to up until now. Now that they are getting to a point where they're saying that you have to connect, you have to go out, and there is a sewer within that 200 feet, so you have to connect to it.
Okay, again, and I'm not trying to, I'm trying to be elementary here, because I'm very slow with this stuff, but there is not a tap there for me to be able to bring it from my house to the roadway, okay? Why is the City of Lorain not completing their sewer, putting taps in for everybody here? I think that the majority of us, the law says we have to do it, I'm a law-abiding citizen, I'll tap in, but why should I complete a sewer system for the City of Lorain that they're gonna be charging me 30 bucks a month? I don't even know if they get regulated on how much they charge us.
Well, they are regulated on how much they can charge, and it's based upon the fee that they charge to the residents within the city. They're only allowed to add a certain increased percentage over the fee they charge their home residents. The other thing with regard to the laterals and them completing the sewer, per se, that's what they're doing. Putting the laterals in and completing the project is exactly what we're here talking about.
At our cost.
But it will always be at your cost.
Why not the City of Lorain, or the entire county, you know, as far as grants, saying that they haven't looked into grants for us, why not us?
Well, I don't think, let me ask one at a time, it'll be easier.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I like keeping it elementary, too, making it easier. When they do a project, whether it be, if they did the complete project at one time, they would have done the sewer and the laterals. Obviously, that's the preferred method, but again, we all weren't here. When the laterals go in and the project is put to the property lines, by law, those are assessable projects to the property owners, for various reasons. The other issue is the regulation of the fees, and then you're safeguarded by code on that, they would have to raise the fee to their residents before they could raise the fee to the other residents. And you have one more?
I don't recall, I was at a war.
Sorry.
I just wanted to let you guys chew on that a little bit, I'm sure you already have, but that's it.
And Wayne, is it 200 feet of the home, or 200 feet of the property?
It's 200 feet of the front basement footer, I believe.
Okay.
Now, you can add, that's something the Health Department, if you ask a different Health Department employee a different day, they'll give you a different answer.
So if this house, just build my house way back on the property.
Yeah, just build your house way back.
Okay.
But if you do have problems with your septic tank, you have to connect or replace it anyway. Yeah, actually, I just got the, right here, I can read it to you. "For purposes of these regulations and consistent with the Highway Vice Code 611751, a property shall be deemed to be assessable to a sanitary sewer system if the foundation wall of the residents on the property is 200 feet or less from the nearest boundary of the right-of-way line." So you got about 230 feet from the sewer, or whatever the calculation. So it's actually the boundary of the right-of-way line to the house is 200 feet.
Thank you, Wayne. Sir, next in line, it's like standing in line for the confessional.
Forgive me, Father, for I abstained. My name is Jim Conrady, I live at 7828 Oberlin Road. I also happen to be a zoning board member. A while ago, we put together a request to get an independent civil engineering consulting firm to assess the load and the consumption that our system, the sewage system, would require for the, not only the area that we're talking about, but also any projected growth in our area. And the zoning board, of course, gets a lot of people who tend to run past us, development ideas, they try to essentially see what sort of hurdles they have, and they also kind of give us a preview of the sort of development we can expect in our area. I can tell you for a fact that we had hired D.B. Hart and Associates and Consultants out of Cleveland to take a look at the comprehensive planning resolution that we had developed within our zoning board, and to take a look at some of the issues. A big issue from, just as a summation, that D.B. Hart came up with is that our sewer system is close to capacity now, and even with the million-plus gallon reservoir that was added on K Drive, there's still a 15-inch pipe in and out of the thing. And essentially, he said that, based on his calculations, and he's a professional, he said that this is going to be a system that's going to be outmoded very quickly, okay? Tapping into it just overloads it even more. I also spoke with Bob Gretech at CT Consultants, who is the, it's not actually Lorain that is in charge of all of the engineering, they actually farm out their septic concerns to CT Consultants. Bob Gretech is the chief engineer, I believe, on this project, and he basically made the statement to me that in 2001, they made a 20-year projection of the growth entailing 450 residences to be added to the system. And based on that, they said that basically our system could handle it. However, in that amount of time, even in just in two years, as of 2003, 80 new homes were built just in Hidden Valley alone, okay? And there are more people adding on to this system as we go. So we have some big concerns here about capacity going on, not just, okay, I'm actually, I have the same stance as Neil Lynch. I think, I'd like to go on record to say, yes, I do think that eventually our sewage system is, our sanitary sewer system is correct for us, and we're probably going to need to tap in as soon as our old septics do fail. And I don't think there's anybody in this room who would disagree with that. If your system fails, and the Health Department says, yes, your system has failed, you need to do something about it, we would comply. I don't think there's any question of that. It's a response, personal responsibility, and I think most of us would agree that, you know, we would do that. However, there are some of us that do a little bit of farming, and we actually get nutrients from our septic system, believe it or not. And that's another thing that probably doesn't come up very often, but it is true. There's also some other benefits, too, of not having the $30 bill every month is, of course, a, you know, a little extra money in your wallet, that's a good thing. But there's other things to consider as well, too. There was a person on Oberlin Road who had a failed system, and took the initiative, and did a tap-in. He hired his own, basically, excavating team. He hired them, had them come in, do the tap-in, and did it for about $2,500, okay? And if he can do it for $2,500, I think we can probably personally come up with a better opportunity to have this work done than what we're being quoted from the county. So that's something I think that we need to think about. I think collectively, we can, it doesn't have to be a major project, I think we can, if we're allowed to. I think we can tap into this and investigate this as a group, but handle it individually. I think most of us will agree, you know, that paying $5,200 plus, and all the additional pipe that needs to be added in, and also disabling the old system, by the time you get done doing all of that, you're in pretty, pretty big money. And even if you spread it out over 20 years, and I'm not sure how many people are gonna... It's still big money, okay? And if we can get it done...
...social security, you're sure as hell one got it.
Okay, you know, there you go. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big issue, and especially in our area, it's a, it's a very big concern. So I would like to make those points known, and I also have an appeals packet that I'd like to give to the acting clerk, if I could, and if there's anybody who cares to read it and sign it, and, you know, so that you would have more information. And I would be more than happy to meet with the commissioners or whoever else would be interested in this extra information. And anybody who's got more information to give me, I thrive on information, I really, I want to get this right, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
My name is Mike Stevens, I also live on Middle Ridge Road. Only take up a couple minutes, I just got a couple quick questions. A few months back, along Middle Ridge Road, they had installed another sewer line following up the road before it was resurfaced. Several areas throughout Middle Ridge Road, there's taps that are up off of this line. And I was kind of curious as to why taps weren't offered to the residents that are there now while they were putting the sewer in.
Wayne, can you answer that question?
Are you referring to the sewer that was just built this last year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm not aware that there's anybody connected to it. You're saying there's some people connected to it?
I know, I'm talking about taps, talking about the things we're discussing paying for right now, the taps, the green pipes that stick up in the front yard.
Some, that was a project by the City of Lorain, and I'm sure they got compensated for that cost some way.
Okay.
I'm not sure, you know, I can't answer a question, it's another project, but if they did that, and they had, you know, they were compensated in a different manner, but somewhat for that cost, I'm sure they were.
Well, they came through our township, somebody has to know.
Yeah, I think the issue now is that the sewer that was put in is the same depth and, you know, where the existing sewer is.
Right, but it's brand-new. It's brand-new. It means there's nothing going through it right now. And right now, we're discussing a system that's close to capacity. Why wasn't this new system offered up as well? It was open, the road wasn't resurfaced, and we could have cut through the top of the road and saved thousands of dollars, rather than boring underneath it, which we have to do now, because it's a brand-new resurfaced road. I mean, a few months ago, Middle Ridge was basically closed, because it was tore up.
Yeah, I think, answer your, there's two parts to that question. Yes, that sewer, you are using that sewer. It's connected to your sewer right there at the intersection of Oberlin and Middle Ridge. So everything south of that intersection is using that new sewer. The other issue is that the, they went with the project in a hurry, it was not an assessment project, the public wasn't permitted to, you know, to object to it that way. The way I understand it, that they did what they felt they needed to do, that was their project, and...
Well, there's several homes...
We weren't part of that.
There's several homes that have these laterals in their front yard.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that, I didn't know that.
That was attached to this new sewer.
And that's for the 17 homes on the road out there, how many of them, you think?
These are on the south side of the road, I didn't count them, but I know it's more than a dozen, I think.
Yeah, see, that's, that would just be one very small, isolated part of this project. The majority of our connections are all south of that intersection.
Could they actually do a project out there without the sanitary engineer department, the county commissioners, and the trustees not knowing about it?
That's my question.
We knew about the project, and we did see the plans for the project, we saw no connections on that project, we were unaware if anybody was being allowed to connect to it.
Well, I don't think these are vent pipes. I've installed a few sewers in my time, and I'm pretty sure they're not vent pipes.
Are they at the manholes? Close to manholes?
No, they're coming up in front yards, actually. They are the green pipes.
Well, if the sewer was open, the laterals would have cost $1.98.
Amen.
Now, that would charge, unfortunately, they would probably charge you what the going rate was back then.
Trucks were out there all the time, the county engineers' trucks were there surveying the whole thing.
Yeah, the project took some time, and there are developments that are up the street from where I live now, and in front of every proposed site, what it seems, there's laterals poking out.
Yeah, the only thing I think we can answer is that there was no assessments done, because it has, that I do know, it has to come to this board to do the assessment.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, who knows, they might have made deals on their own, and that's the question today. And I think the appropriate way, and maybe I'm wrong, is to have the 80 residents talk to the three trustees and tell us what you'd like us to do. If you can do it cheaper on your own, which it sounds like you can, then we can, I mean, that's my statement back in September of '18, which is, tell us what you would like. But what happens is, we have 80 people, and everyone starts talking about every issue out there regarding it, because there is, it is not a simple yes or no, okay? But I think the issue at hand is, this project's gonna cost you, average, $9,500 bucks, okay? Now, can you do it cheaper than that? I think you can. Now, I don't know if you want us to participate, that's what we're here to discuss. I would prefer to say, you guys are meeting again from the previous meeting, we know the trustees, to give us a letter and say, hey, out of the 80 homes, 70 people said no, we'll deal with it on our own. We don't want the county's help to do this, we don't like this project, because it's too expensive, we can tap in on our own for $2,500 or what have you, and then we could be done with this project. Is that a fair statement, maybe, for you guys? Because really, the answer is, do you want us to continue or not with this project? Because the way it's set up, we've already had a public hearings, it's already closed, and we have to vote yes or no for this project. If we vote no, I'd rather have it come from the trustees, because that's a form of government we have, that's in the community, have the 80 people say, trustees, write a letter to the commissioners, saying that the majority of the people in this area that are going to be tapped in do not want this project. I mean, is that a fair statement? Would that be for Neil? Would that be, would you, I don't want to put more pressure on you, but, you know, you kind of mentioned county commissioner later, so I thought maybe... Because if your three representatives come to us and say, our 80 residents would rather do it a different way, and rather make a better deal than what we have at the table today, I would like to see that letter from you, you know, if that would be appropriate or if you'd like that.
Well, that may be appropriate, Commissioner Moore, it might be difficult. I do want to thank you for the monkey that's sitting on my shoulder right here, thank you very much.
I've had it for four years.
First off, again, we, I can't make a definite decision on your proposal without having input from the Health Department, because again, we have to come back, how did we get to this point? The way we got to this point were letters that were issued by the Health Department, initially indicating that all the residents on the east side of Oberlin Road must connect by a certain date, but that wasn't required of the residents on the west side, and some of the ones on Middle Ridge, because of the added costs of boring under the roads. And when that first was brought to the trustees' attention, it was brought to our attention by a group of residents that showed up at a trustee meeting, at that point, the trustees weren't even aware that these letters were sent out. And so the concern that the residents expressed at that point in time, just as they are today, were multifaceted. You had those that didn't want to hook up at all, you had those that wanted to know, how come I have to and the west side doesn't, you know, like they're being favored. You did have the concern where we had some of the seniors that were on the fixed income, and said they just literally did not have the money. And probably the one that, where we had a specific request as opposed to just expressing concerns, was why couldn't this be an assessment? And so that's where we then got a hold of the county officials, we've talked with the county administrator, we've talked with the county engineer, what can we do to bring this cost down? Because let's face it, it always comes down to money. And that's what the real issue is, is how much this costs, and who's going to pay for it? We all love it when somebody else puts the bill. But right now, the fact of the matter is, in the long term, we know we're all going to have to hook up to that sewer, so how can we do it in the most economical way? At that point in time, we did hold meetings at Amherst Township, Wayne Bishop was there, County Health Department was there, Ken Carney was there, and we literally had to walk out to all the homes and give them a notice of this meeting, because unfortunately, where we thought there was an agreement notifying the affected residents, that didn't happen, realizing township trustees don't have the list of the residents that are affected. So we had to walk down and put a notice on everybody's door, not knowing who's hooked up and who's not hooked up. And at that particular meeting was where then the process evolved, where the county engineers said that they would look into, how can they bring this cost down? And that's where the current proposal that was brought up, that they could get this cost down by doing all the hookups at one time, east side, west side, Middle Ridge, and also making an assessment, so that you could pay over 20 years versus having the front, all the money up front. Well, now if you're asking me, is it a question if we even have to hook up, I can't answer that. It was the Health Department that told the residents that they had to, and I don't want to speak for the Health Department, so my recommendation would be that you continue this, and have the Health Department be represented, and tell us what step they're going to make. Because before I would go out and start spending my own dollars for attorney fees, I would like to know that I even need to do that. I don't know, maybe they've changed their mind. But again, I can't read their mind, so we need to have them hear. So my recommendation would be that you continue this meeting, and that the county, I'm sending the monkey back over on your shoulder, that the county notify the affected residents, since they do have the list... since they do have the list, as to when this meeting could be continued if you can't make a decision this evening. And that, what I would hope, and perhaps, and it's the health department that can tell us if this board has this leeway, as far as what the timing is that a resident needs to tie in. To tie in, we need those, we need to have those laterals there, we need to have those risers there. And perhaps that can all be done as one project, and we'd have to hear from our residents if they're even willing to do this, because at this point in time, without any additional funding, the number we were given is five thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. Now, perhaps people would be willing to take that and do that as an assessment over twenty years. And if they're doing that over twenty years, they are not paying the, whether, whether it's going to be twenty dollars a month, thirty dollars a month, depending upon the demands they put on that system, the City of Lorraine, for the wastewater treatment, they won't have to pay that, and they won't have to pay the additional four thousand or forty-five hundred dollars to hook up from their home to the actual tap. And that's the question, and that's a question for the health department. And then we may even have, some residents may agree, if they know they have a failed system, and I don't know, I don't want to speak for them here, because I can understand where some would be concerned that may know they have a failed system. And though Mr. Conrad, he indicated that everyone wants to be good citizens, and does have a concern for an environment, they do, but again, it comes down to money. Your concerns can waver whether you can pay for it or not. And so, if they have a failed system, that would be the decision, do they or don't they hook up at this time, or do they have some time? And I think there that we all should have agreement, if the property transfers, then we can hook in, but you have the ability to hook in because the laterals and the risers are there. And at the time you sell the property, the proceeds from the property will help pay that cost. So that's what I would suggest, as opposed to us trying to get eighty-some people to come up with exactly what they want to do here. So I've made my recommendations, I don't know if the residents want to agree to that. And that's what I would suggest, continue this, get the health department here, and consider those three particular items.
The fact that the public hearings closed, the health department wouldn't, you know, I'd rather see something in writing from them. And the fact goes back to nineteen eighty-eight, you guys were all sold the bill of goods and said you weren't have to deal with it, now you gotta deal with it sixteen years later. So anything we do, I'd prefer to have in writing from the health department.
I think we already have it in writing, they've already stated what they're gonna do, if, should, could, you know, maybes and ifs.
They keep changing, so...
The people are here, they know all the, everything that they're confronted with, why prolong the pain? Let's make a decision, get it over with. If anybody here has changed their mind from, from what they decided before, yell out now, say something now. If you've changed your mind, you decide you want to prolong this pain, and wait a little bit longer, and check some other things out, do you want us to make a decision now? I'd like to hear from you, this is your money, like I said before, it's your decision. I'm not gonna reach in your pocket and pull your money out for a project that you don't want. Or if you do want it, let us know. Have you changed your mind? Anybody changed your mind from raising their hand before?
Well, no, that is, the issue with Neil's-
No, that's the issue with me, that's how I'm going.
What Neil's bringing up is like, hey, look, you know, let's not, what he's waiting for is the health department isn't here to say anything, correct?
Correct.
But if it's like, look, if it's only gonna be instead of ninety-five hundred dollars, fifty-two hundred-
Correct.
And you don't have to tap in-
Right.
Then that might be a nice compromise.
Exactly, because with that, Commissioner Moore, the resident would be paying that assessment and their property tax bill until the point that that property transfers. And let's face it, we've got different groups of residents here. You have those that have lived there since the time this was put in. If they've lived there since the time it was put in, they've owned that home at least sixteen years. Good chance they owned that home before that. And because none of us can stop time from moving on, we're all growing older. And for those of us that reach a certain point in time, there is a time when we do leave our homes. At that point, the issue can be taken care of, as long as the lateral and tap are available to do that, and it can be paid out of the proceeds. But don't force a resident to tap in, which almost doubles the cost-
Correct.
-if they don't need to. But we need the health department to give us that answer, since they're the ones right now that are saying we need to go forward.
Yeah, but Neil, excuse me, but what I've heard before is the health department changes their mind, okay? Who's to say that they won't do it again? I mean, you know, they're pretty wishy-washy, they could do what they want, and they know it, and they go and, you know, and say, oh, well, the law says I can do this. Well, then they're gonna do it, any, whatever they want to do, they're gonna do. So why am I gonna take their word for anything right now?
Could we get it in writing, if we extend this meeting, so you don't make your decision today, and we get it in writing, now the residents have something that's a little easier to decide on, since their other approach is, the commissioners say no to this, the health department comes at them, and now we're into litigation.
Well, then why don't we just post, well, we can-
It'd be different if we had something in writing saying, we agree to this, if it goes forward.
We can extend this, we can extend the meeting now. My main thing is, I don't want to have another one without the health department here.
Correct.
Good luck.
I agree.
No, no, I mean, I'm telling you, I don't, I don't want to have another meeting unless the health department's here.
They knew we were here today, didn't they? Did they know, did, were they notified of this meeting today?
I called Jim yesterday to get him here. I called Jim yesterday, and he said he found out-
I spoke to, I spoke to Ken Pierce last week, after the East River meeting, and-
And he didn't have anyone here today, so...
I, I didn't specifically ask, but he, I told him that we had these issues coming up.
What date have you got, Teresa?
August fifth, August twelve, August nineteen.
Fifth, twelve, nineteen. Thirty days, it sounds good.
Fifth is fine, if we could have, could you make that, Neil?
Which day?
August fifth.
Which is next Thursday.
Next Thursday? Or do you think you need more time to...
I think, Commissioner Maynard, just a second, and I think if we're gonna propose any resolution that may be a bifurcation of the process, I think that we're gonna have to sit down with the health department before we have a meeting here and try to do it.
But it's gotta include the trustees.
Well, what I was gonna suggest, as a, as a, as a compromise, that you give us a little bit more time in that, Mr. Lynch and myself, meet with some people from the health department, at least give the discussion points to them, before we actually give them for the first time in this room.
All right, then bring it back in writing.
And then we, well, if, if they're gonna tell us no, you know, then we know where we're going from there. But I think, debating it here in the public hearing, what will happen is, we'll have another, we'll have another meeting, the issues will be raised again, and then they're gonna say, well, we'll have to go back and think about it. Then we're gonna have another meeting, and every one of these meetings, we gotta continue to send out letters and notify people and do all this. So if you give us enough time, I think it'd be more appropriate that either you, or Mr. Yurg, or who, you know, we go to the health department and talk to them. And see what, see what the level of acceptance is.
I think that's fine, Jim, because my understanding is that right now, we do not have the time constraint, unless there's some time deadline here I'm not aware of, that the previous hearing with Columbia Township had.
Well, we're just a little concerned with the, the cost becoming a little bit stale, and one of the things that, obviously, if a project is litigated, you know, they, they look at the cost and the assessments, and you have to have some timeliness to those, to those costs and assessments. And we're getting a little stale, but I, I agree with you, we have some time.
Can we also then, if we're going to hold that, an additional meeting to discuss these points, that we look at where there may be additional funding, since this was originally started as an economic development-type project, and was not a petition by the homeowners or residents to get that line in place?
I would be interested in hearing those other avenues and discussing those other avenues. I'll say that.
I think the key word was discussing. Right, so we're not having another public hearing.
Neil can call me.
Yeah, well, you're just going to continue this and try and set up a future meeting with the health department.
We can hook it up for sixty days, if you prefer sixty days from now. Yeah, we have right here, and you can get it from the clerk, it's in the, you have it.
And what is thirty days?
It would be, well-
Let's go, let's go.
September thirtieth or September twenty-third?
I mean, that's-
September twenty-third's fine with me. That's sixty.
Yeah, that's sixty.
Oh, we are in, in July.
We're in July.
So Monday.
August twenty-sixth?
That's fine.
Eight twenty-sixth?
Well, yeah. I mean, we do have that public hearing on the amendment of Lorraine County regulations, but that's-
That's okay.
Okay.
Eight twenty-sixth, Oberlin.
Is this on August twenty-sixth?
Yes.
That's a Thursday?
Correct.
Okay.
And that is fair week.
I, uh-
That's fair week? Why do you need to do that during fair week?
Okay. Well, it's either a week prior to, which would be the nineteenth of August, or not till the ninth of August, which we already have access management public hearing, and Sep-, what?
Ninth of September, you mean?
Yes.
You said August.
I'm sorry, and the one oh eight decision.
September ninth is fine.
September nine.
The same day as the one oh eight decision.
That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, must bring them both together. September nine.
September ninth?
Yes.
I should have been writing in pencil.
No.
Neil, Neil, is it okay for me to set up the meeting? Do you want to be the person? Do you want all the trustees with the health department? How do you want it?
Well, I would prefer, Jim, that in any case, any time it affects Amherst Township, that all the trustees have the opportunity, but you can set up the meeting and contact me. The way the trustees have divided up responsibilities, I am the trustee with direct responsibility for sanitary sewers.
Okay. My assistant's in the back. Sandy, will you take care of that, please? Thank you.
Okay, so you're going, we're going to meet again, those of us who are interested in what you're going to cook up. September nine.
I'll second it.
At ten a.m.
Further discussion?
I just asked if we need a motion for this.
She moved, and he made a second.
She made this motion, I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance this morning. Ma'am clerk, if you would move on.
Under the sheriff, authorized Lorraine County Sheriff to participate in FYO for local law enforcement block grant and apply to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for a grant in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
Some of.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, county administrator?
You ain't gonna talk with them talking, are you? You got anything to say, or no?
No, you don't.
You're right.
I'm reading your thought.
I'll, I'll take a pass this morning, since we've had such a long morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Innes?
I have no report.
Commissioner's report, nothing here.
Yes.
I'll go Dave.
On the, on the board correspondence?
Yes.
I've got some complaints, a lot of the board correspondence not being put in the public record.
That is a public record, that is there.
Yeah, but doesn't, but then, like the June twenty-first letter, Jim?
Yeah, excuse me, folks.
That was irritating, wasn't it?
Yeah. It's all right.
I didn't do that, I'm just looking out there. As far as, when you get correspondence, what's our procedure for logging it in as received by the board? What goes on the correspondence agenda?
Usually, everything goes on correspondence unless it's an action that needs to be done by the board, then it kind of gets routed, and to see if they want to place it on the-
As an, as an actionable item?
Correct.
Okay.
Shouldn't all requests all be put on a board correspondence, even though we're not gonna take, if we don't take action? I mean, the bottom line, if someone's requesting something, we should still put that as board correspondence, shouldn't we?
We could. Just never done it before.
Oh, really?
No.
Okay. So if somebody's not, if somebody's asking for correspondence, or asking for something, we, we don't put that as board correspondence?
No, I would, we haven't, unless we voted on it.
I'm trying to think. I don't want to say no, and I don't want to say yes, because I think it's worked both ways, actually.
Well, you know, as far as board correspondence goes, I, let me, let me, let me make a really loose statement, there is no requirement by law to even have a list of board correspondence, there's no-
Oh, really?
Right. So it's something that the boards adopted-
Oh, okay.
-for their own procedural issues, but there is no revised code that indicates that they have to put any, any or all or, they can put none.
Unless we take action on it, or the person requests that it's journalized.
Right, normally, normally you put stuff there that you're sharing with each other, your agenda is a sharing with each other, and then you have your, your board correspondence package, that's for the board's consumption, usually only.
And did you want to change it?
Well, I just thought it, you know, I didn't know it was, if it's not required by code, I just thought people were sending in letters and everything else, um...
Well, a lot of people don't realize that if they put it on, on the request in, that it, that it, we are to journalize it-
Mm-hmm.
-then we have to journalize it.
Right, but-
I would think, Jerry, no.
You, you're, well, you asked your-
Well, no, my concern is, I get a lot of letters that are unsigned, and that usually goes into a, a different type of file that I don't read.
There's also a lot of letters that the board sees and I never see, so-
Yeah, that's true, too.
Right, a request, a request to any individual-
Well, it's, but I'm saying a board correspondence, not an individual correspondence.
But a, a request to any individual or the board, does, I don't believe that they're actionable, unless the board wants them to be actionable, is that correct?
I was just asking, that was-
The only thing you have to do with correspondence is index it so that you can access it, should somebody make a public records request.
Okay.
That is what you have to do.
That was my only, that was my only concern.
My question, Jerry, is if a person that's sending us a letter requested it be journalized or made a part of the record, do we have to?
No.
We don't?
No, obviously, your only obligation is that you have, make it readily accessible-
Record-keeping.
...so that you can find it. You can't just put it someplace and then say, I don't know where it is.
It's easier to put it in the-
So the purpose of journalizing is really to provide that indexing system.
So if we were to journalize it and put it in the journal, we don't have to worry about what file it's in or if it's lost?
Right, yeah, the, let me, let me, the journalizing is kind of nice, but you can simply file it, and it has to be retrievable from the file should a public documents request be made. So we're being, the terms we're using, but it just needs to be filed and we need to maintain it for whatever length of time we're required to by law to have that on file. And each document, because we do have, we do work very well with the records, and each document has a lifespan. Some are perpetual forever and some are as short as a year or two.
County Commissioners are five years.
Is it five years, and after five years, if we're, if we're doing our job effectively, we're purging those files and we're sending our request to the Records Commission to dispose of them, things that are, but record keeping is the issue, not necessarily journalizing.
So it's an issue of, a matter of what we wanna do?
Yeah.
Okay, so what do you wanna do?
Well, that was the only question I had.
I mean, is, do you wanna, we can, we can set a policy that those type of things be journalized so we don't have to look for them.
No, I think it's up to each and every commissioner, if you wanna draw on it, then it sounds like you can.
Sure.
And if you don't want to, you don't have to.
Individually?
Yeah. That's what, that's what, that was my question, if someone's sending an individual letter. Someone sent an individual letter, is that considered board cor, board correspondence or is it, is it considered, and does it have to be documented?
If it goes to an individual commissioner, it's your correspondence, you can ask to have it added to the.
But then even if I wanted to, I can put it in a box and say, "Jim, this all goes into board correspondence."
No, I think you'd have to bring it before the board.
No, that's why, that's why you vote on it, to say, "I want number one, two on there, but not number three."
Oh, okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, if, if, if a commissioner asks to have something like an agenda item, what we agreed to, that any individual commissioner can add something to the agenda, they could, I would think it would bleed over to the correspondence, any individual commissioner. I would suggest, though, that we probably would list it as a correspondence to that commissioner on the board correspondence.
Correct.
Okay, so then in other words, all the correspondence that are listed here, are they journalized on this?
They're in the.
They're in the journal, correct? So what you're saying is to list it, have Teresa list it here, the clerk, whoever, list it, and then of course it's automatically journalized, right?
Yes, if you want to do it, then that's what I wanted to clarify, so.
Now, there's a few, uh.
I think we're doing that.
I, I like the word the lady used when she was here, she said she was gonna keep things elementary, I always try to keep them elementary, then I overcomplicate them. There are a few pieces of, of correspondence that we do receive that have to be journalized. A couple of, one of them that quickly comes to mind is the Dog Wardens Report, is a report that has to be made to us by code. There are certain reports that we receive that have to be journalized. So not every piece of correspondence has to be journalized, but there are certain reports that we're required to get by code, and in order to verify that we have received those correspondence, those things should be journalized. So I, while it was, it is a simple issue, you and I probably should talk about it a little more.
I think it's already solved, because whatever is in that packet when it comes to me is over here under correspondence and she's journalizing all that.
I mean, there are some issues that do come in that is FBI only to the board, and those are, you know, lawsuits and confidential things and that, so those are not listed.
So does that answer your question?
Yeah, my question was answered a while ago, so.
Yeah, you just give it to Teresa.
Do you have any report?
No, that was, that was all I had.
Okay, I have no report, so we can move on to old business, I have none.
None here. David?
None.
New business?
None.
None. Board correspondence.
I move the reading be waived. Second.
Let's see, I don't think I have any exceptions, I went through 11, so I'm okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Public comment.
All these people here, Bob, they love not to hear you.
Couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. All these people are here today and they didn't stick around for your comment.
Well, my public has left.
Yeah.
But I am very pleased that that many people turned out at a public meeting. That is the fullest I have ever seen this room. Perhaps others have seen it more. My name is Robert Kish. And I have formed a group that I feel everybody participates, participates, is actually part of it if you come to any of these meetings. I call it CAT. The A is the primary word in it, activist, civic activist team, and we had a team in here today. So civic activist team has a couple remarks to speak on. In regards to Mr. Barth last week, Mr. Barth and the Commissioners did not mention one thing that has been mentioned many times in the past, on the millions that will be borrowed for the airport or granted from the FAA, those are FAA dollars. And they will be, as in Fairbanks, they say multiplied or churned six or seven times over, how many times is it? Six? Okay. So, we're gonna have an influx of some federal dollars into here, rather than a fleeing of dollars. A box is a box is a box. Though, your view depends whether you are inside or outside the box. Those outside the box cannot see into a closed box. Be active, not reactive. I was reactive, that's what got me into problems, I waited till they did to me what they're doing to these people, I didn't get on it when they filled in Butte, Muddy Creek, and they did, and no notice was given. The ballot box, it's a big box, it might not be a big box, but it's a very important box, use it. Older residents and others can vote from home if they are registered voters. Become one and request an absentee ballot. Be active here in Lorraine County for your own benefit, don't just gripe, vote, but please, only one vote per registered active voter. We the people, in order to form a more perfect county in River City, Liria, now have a justice center that will last 100 years. It's in the book or in this case in the ground. Me, I am just one people. I would like to remind you of a box hidden in plain view, hidden in plain view that is of historic proportions. It is written, "There are none so deaf as those who do not hear or those who do not, who will not see." I am speaking of the old cold courthouse. An idea has come to me, and I think it's worth pursuing, I mentioned it last week, maybe it didn't go on, I don't know. Well, it does work sometimes. Hey! That was not planned. I am speaking of the old cold courthouse, finished in 1881, it has now exceeded 100 years, the expected life of this building. It is now 123 years old, still standing, and I believe on the National Historic Register. No wrecking ball, please, as most of Liria Commons has already done. We've lost more buildings than remain standing. It should continue to serve Lorraine County as a joint museum and as a veterans memorial. Preserve what artifacts of Lorraine County exist and also what its veterans' sacrifices have already contributed and will contribute. Recycle it, reuse it, preserve it. We pass this way but once, do not wait until the last of the present World War II and later veterans are under the sod and are unable to see or contribute artifacts to preserve. Even audio accounts can be housed there, inside the building and some of the rooms for the various branches, the various wars, or whatever you want to divide it into, plus the Museum for History of Lorraine County. They're doing this, I heard on television, they want veterans to come in and audiotape their experiences at the memorial, the new memorial in Washington DC for World War II. We seem unable to settle on a name for the new justice center. Call the old courthouse a memorial, a museum, to be used in conjunction with a monument that may or may never be built, considering it been 10 years of talk and nothing but talk of a veterans monument. Thank you and thank all the veterans who have already made the greatest sacrifice. Remember, freedom isn't free, a Tom Hanks quote, dying for freedom isn't the worst that could happen. I'll say that again, I goofed, dying for freedom isn't the worst that could happen, being forgotten is. Don't forget the people that have actually built and died from this community when we could have something to preserve their memory and the works they have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Any comments, please?
Minnie Wade? I was waiting for you to remove your backpack. Minnie Wade. Good morning, Minnie.
I was going to say good morning, but it's good afternoon.
No.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, County officials, good morning taxpayers and citizens of Lorraine County. This morning, I have a question. Yes, I heard the gentleman say, "Freedom is not free." My question is, did you receive two letters from me, the chairperson of the Judge Howard Memorial Committee?
I did.
I received it, read it today. And that's what brought up my question earlier about board correspondence, if you were listening to that, because everyone was kind of loud in here at that point, so.
Sometimes, you know, we don't speak loud enough, but I'm, I hope at this moment that each person can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And sometimes we need to repeat. My question is, did you receive two letters from me, Commissioners?
I did, yes.
The second question, we have no answer. Why?
I'll respond today, I got, I read it today and I'll respond to you today, or would you rather have me respond publicly right now? Would you want me to write in letter?
Just a moment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just a moment, Dave, just a moment.
I'm sorry.
Certainly, I believe in giving anyone respect. My mother taught me to give respect in order to receive respect, and certainly professionally. And I am a professional citizen, senior citizen of this county, and I certainly hope that you would give us the kind of respect that we have given you to respond to us in writing.
Are we going to do that as a board or individually?
Well, I received my letter individually, I'll be responding individually, okay?
Anyone else have a comment on that?
Since you just asked for individual instead of public.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I haven't seen the second one yet.
I received, I believe there were two in a row, correct, right, they were together?
That's correct. I sent a letter June 21st.
Correct.
And also July 21st.
Correct.
If you haven't received it, let me know, and certainly we can.
I got it, read it this morning, and then I brought up the question about the correspondence, and I'll respond this afternoon, and you should have it by Friday.
Betty, you didn't receive a letter?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
You received one?
I did, I read it today.
Kathy, is it in there today? Do I have it?
So all three of you have the letter, and that's the Commissioners.
Yeah.
At this point, three minutes, thank you. I'm down with it and can't quit it, must admit it, I'm through with it, and you deal with it, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Minnie.
Thanks.
Fred?
Good morning, I know, good afternoon, I've been sitting back there so long, I done forgot what time it is. But it's in, it's, this is in regards to the correspondence that was sent to the Commissioners, this is the second correspondent. The bottom line here is, what we are asking for is for this to be put on your agenda and vote on it. Now, you can vote it in, you can vote it down, but give us the respect to vote on the issue. Vote on the request that we have made to you and correspond back to us in a professional manner in the same way we have responded to you. I think it's only fair, I've kind of been mulling over this and this, this certainly has bothered me. It, it has some underlying connotations that I don't really like to think about in the way that, in the way that we have not received correspondence back in a professional manner. And I, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just not gonna stand for that. As, as a, a citizen of Liria and Lorraine County, and also as the president of Lorraine County Urban League, I represent a certain constituency of people, and when we correspond in a manner that we think is respectful, we feel that you should, you should honor that and then proceed accordingly. So I, I'm, I'm going on record today to say that I hope that Commissioners will deal with this in a professional manner, put it on the agenda, vote it up, vote it down, but give us, at least give us the respect to put this item on the agenda. Thank you.
And again, Fred, just to let you know, I did get it today, went through my mail today, and I will be corresponding today, in which I received it today, okay? It was, it was mailed out and it was received on Tuesday with my secretary out of the office on Tuesday and Wednesday, so I did receive it, I read it today, and I'll be responding today.
And, and I, I don't have any.
You and I talking, this is just you?
I don't have, I don't have any problem with you responding today. That was not, that was, that was Minnie's question. My, my, my.
But you made it sound like I wasn't responding to you.
Okay, yeah, okay.
And that's what I have an issue with.
Now, you, you, okay, you're, you're correct, you are, you will respond today.
Oh, yeah.
I accept, I accept that. Again, I'm gonna reiterate, I like to see it on the agenda and vote it on publicly. Thank you.
Jean?
E. Jean Rice, Lorraine County citizen, also in behalf of NAACP, when we presented this, we said it was a human issue. And I'm like Fred, I thought about it, I was like, what is the problem? As Commissioners, I think you're supposed to serve all citizens, give all citizens recognition and respect. That's all we asking of you, we just ask you to do a simple thing, just as simple as A, B, C. Consider putting it on the agenda like Fred said, vote it up, vote it down, but please give us the time and that respect, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Jean. Anyone else? Martha, you gonna talk? Well, then we'll wait for you.
Good morning, my name's Martha Pie.
Good morning, Martha.
And I'm a resident of Lorraine City. And as I came to the meeting this morning, I looked at the agenda and I was disappointed when I didn't see that this issue was not on the agenda. And like Fred said, we do respect, that's all we asking for, respect and do the right thing. So we respect each and every one citizen, because we are law-abiding citizens, taxpayers, voters. We are here, this is our county, our, our county, our city, and we are here for very prestigious reason, to give honor to Judge Howard. And you have the letters and not responding to this, not responding to us about what, that, not getting no response from you is very, was very disappointing, and I think that was disrespectful to the committee on this issue, so we're just asking for respect and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else? If not, I move that the Commissioners go into executive session for the personnel items that were discussed.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Aye.